You're on record.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Present.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Ms. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Kaplan.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Where's he?
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, certified, United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to swear?
Sure.
Mr. Chadwick, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, before we open the meeting to the general public, I do just want to take a moment of silence, recognizing the poor child who was killed about one block down the road at the intersection of 202 and Littleton over there, hit by a car last night while riding his bike, which is what children do. He was only eight years old, so just want to take a moment of silence for him. All right, thank you. At this time, we will open the meeting to the general public. If there's anyone in the room who has business to conduct with the board that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, we will move on to correspondences. We have correspondence for the application 2327, asking for it to be carried from tonight to October 9th without further notice, and they are granting the board the extension to make a decision on the case.
Motion.
So move.
Second. Okay. I guess we have to go one by one on this.
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Next correspondence is application 2361, 156 Halsey Road, asking to be carried from tonight to December 4th without further notice and granting extensions.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the last correspondence, we received another correspondence about requesting that we remove the 90-day extension from the agenda.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, just a little housekeeping. We need to approve the 2025 calendar of meetings, which is in your packet. Any need to discuss this? We double-checked it for holidays. We should be good.
Move the conference.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we go to the resolutions, which we have grouped. The first two, 2419 and 2414. Berkowitz, Grignani, Mazzarella, Petty, Quinn, who's not here, and Ready.
Some more.
Second.
Hey, Nora.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Okay, the next one is by itself, 2421, Berkowitz, Grignani, Mazzarella, Petty, and Ready.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Okay, 2402 by itself, Berkowitz, Grignani, Jaskiewicz, Mazzarella, Petty, Willins, and Kaplan.
Some more.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. 2411, HDR Holdings, Berkowitz, Grignani, Jaskiewicz, Mazzarella, Petty, Ready, and Kaplan.
Some more.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. And the final one, 2362, this is a small one, Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Mazzarella, and Ready.
Yes, some more.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Okay. I believe that brings us to our agenda items. We will start with 2416, Mohammed Zarir, 24 Seminole Ave. Come on up.
Sure. Are you both going to be testifying?
Yes.
Can you both raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Starting here, please state your names, spell your first and last names, and give us your address.
First name, Mohammed Zerir. Last name, Zerir.
Okay, you can have a seat.
Todd Koenig, I'm the architect of the project. Todd Koenig, architect is the firm. My name is T-O-D-D-K-O-E-N-I-G.
I'm sorry, would you please repeat your name?
Todd Koenig.
Last name, spell it.
K-O-E-N-I-G.
Thank you.
All right, so you are here because you are looking to build a porch, an addition, another porch, some stairs, move in a garage, gonna do a driveway, front walk, a balcony, and install two air conditioning units for a grand total of 10 variances for this property. And it looks like building coverage, you're allowed 20%. You are asking for 26.42%? Oh, this is what you want to do. You just need the one variant. I'm sorry, you need the one variance for the coverage. Okay. You want to tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure.
And why you're doing it?
Sure. This is an existing one-story home, a small home, and the owner and his son are both going to live in this, they're the family, and they just need more room. So we've added a second story to the house. We've squared off some of the odd shapes of it to make the rooms function better, and we've done some aesthetic improvements to make it more attractive. The ground floor, you can see on sheet A2 that there's a, the western first floor on the right side, and just two small bedrooms and a kitchen and a living room. To the left of that is the proposed first floor, which shows that the bedrooms moved around.
Would you please speak into the microphone? Speak into the microphone.
It made a little larger, and the addition of a family room, and the enlarged living and dining area. The second floor is primarily bedrooms. I bring the board's attention to an error on the plan on the second floor. Outside of bed line number five is a note that says kitchen, but that is not a kitchen, that's just a sitting area. There was an original design that had a kitchen there, which had immediately just neglected to take off the word kitchen.
So there will only be one kitchen?
Correct.
There will be no area on the second floor that has everything but a stove and a sink?
There'll be no.
No cabinets, nothing?
Kitchen facility on the second floor.
One family?
Yes.
Is it an extended family?
It's an extended family.
You said families.
Right.
Sorry?
You said families.
Yeah, it's an extended family. It's a man, his wife, and their children, and his father and mother.
And they will have not any cooking facilities on the second floor?
I'm sorry?
They will have no cooking facilities on the second floor?
That is correct.
Who is going to discuss the issues that the township engineer raised in this report? Of course, I haven't seen it before.
I've not seen anything from the second floor.
There you go. Yeah, they should have mailed it to you. You probably just didn't receive it yet.
The issues raised is one of the more extensive reports that I think the board's received from the township engineering department, and it cautions you in terms of the development of this project and what it may cost in terms of the drainage improvements. It makes a strong recommendation that you may want to reconsider the extent of the additions. I mean, the second floor doesn't increase impervious, but all the additions do. It triggers a separate set of rules under the stormwater management rules that the township, basically, they were handed with the township from DEP. So I had no alternative but to utilize those rules. And I think you should sit down with the town engineer, go over this with him, and see whether you're not, you're going to modify your project, go forward with it. You could bear the costs of the drainage. When we're talking about cost drainage, we're talking about significant costs, many thousands of dollars. So to go forward tonight, my recommendation to the board is we not do that. Give you the opportunity with your architect, your engineer, whoever, I think it's primary, an engineer is going to have to sit down, unless you have both licenses, I don't know. It's, it, it. The thing is, we try to get these cases on as quick as you can, and the reports are what they are. So my suggestion is I don't think it would be productive at all to go forward.
We are in agreement.
Without knowing what you're getting into.
We'd very well, we'd like to postpone the case.
All right, we'll carry it. Nora, what do you have? What do you have?
The biggest thing that's in here is that it says, the engineer says you need a New Jersey permit, DEP permit, before.
Yes.
That can be your biggest step and hardest.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we need a date.
I don't know how much time they need.
Let me see if there's a.
All these seven. Do you need that much time? Otherwise, I mean.
I may need more time than that.
You think you might need more time?
I'll take that.
Well, forgive your date cert now. You don't have to re-advertise. If we don't, you'll have to re-advertise.
Yeah, can we go to the September meeting then?
Uh, I can. September 11?
Of course.
Is there anyone here from the public for this case? No? Okay. All right, so we'll carry this to September 11. You're going to grant us all extensions?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess everyone else is here for this case, or there's nothing on TV.
Just want to see you.
Uh, Singh, 2406. Come on down.
You got more?
First thing?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your first and last name, please. Yes, please. You can have a seat.
My first name is Gagan Deep, last name Singh. First name is spelled G-A-G-A-N-D-E-E-P, last name S-I-N-G-A.
Can I ask you to please spell your first name again?
Who is, who is Jesse Singh?
That's my father.
Okay, so you're looking to construct a new two-story, 3,059 and change square foot, single-family dwelling with a front entrance way and some open deck with some stairs, seeking three variances. Open decks, courts, yards, 19 is allowed. You're asking for 24.24. Building coverage, 15 is allowed. You're looking for 21.25% in impervious coverage, little change, 30 allowed. 31.33 is what you are seeking. So if you would, just tell us what you're looking to do and why you're looking to do it. And obviously, you've got some experts here to help.
So basically, we have a large extended family.
Yeah, just pull the mic closer to you.
So essentially, we have a large extended family. It's my parents, our grandparents, and we are looking to expand the current house that was there in order to accommodate all of our relatives that will be living with us over there.
How many is that?
That is two grandparents, my parents, my brother and I, and then, once we get married, we will also have our spouses live together with us in that house.
So we're looking at eight total?
Yes.
Uh, how many cars are you looking for in the driveway?
Currently, we have three cars.
And how many will there be when everyone moves in?
Well, one of our cars recently got into an accident, so we're going to be replacing that car. Maybe like four cars.
One, basically one car per couple?
Yes.
No one, no couple's going to have two cars?
No, most likely not.
Most likely.
Do you represent, Mr. Singh?
Yeah, I'm the engineer.
The engineer. Okay, I understand.
I know you got to square me in.
Yep.
He jumped the gun and wanted to get going.
I understand. Could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you want to?
Yeah. Frederick C. Meola, M-E-O-L-A.
Are you going to give the testimony that tells us that there's not going to be more than one kitchen and all that stuff?
I, I can tell you what the architectural plan shows. There is only one kitchen.
Any other general questions?
Could you clarify that? You say the architectural plan says there's only one kitchen. Are you confirming that from your design?
I just wanted to look at the plan, but I'm pretty sure it's only one kitchen.
It would seem with three separate households, granted, they're all related, the potential for more than one kitchen would occur. If that occurs, the department makes inspection. You would be issued a summons. We've had a number of these types of cases in the recent months of extended families, but we know who's the problem. Zone ordinances are still in my head. Better? Sorry. The, the issue isn't addressed by the zoning code today, so you have to get an approval for all the variances, plus overcome what would appear to be three different households in the building, all related, granted, and it's certainly not unusual, but the size of this house certainly lends itself to have a separate cooking facility. The way the definition is in, in precipny, it's a dwelling unit is a place where you can sleep, eat, and have common space. And obviously, the second floor meets that. And particularly when you have all the bathrooms that you're showing, it just seems that there's going to be spaces that will be kind of private spaces to each of the generations. The other thing we're kind of, we didn't get an engineer's report on this yet.
No.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Did I not get an engineer's report? I can give you the phone number and you can ask. I mean, I send everything to the township engineer?
Yeah.
When I send it out for review, they just haven't responded.
So there's no egresses on the second floor?
No, on the second floor, there's just a stairway in the center of the building.
Okay, and on the first floor, there's just the front door, and is that a back slider?
There, there's a front door, there is a back slider, and there's also a stairwell that leads down to basement.
I see that, okay. Quick question. When we asked you who was going to live there, you gave us four sets of two people, once everything's done. Can you tell us why there are five bedrooms?
Well, one room is going to be used for prayer, and then on the.
That wasn't one of the five bedrooms. There's actually five bedrooms listed?
Well, we would need one guest bedroom as well, in case we have family come over for any sort of function or anything, you know.
Is there a basement to this house?
Yes. Yes.
What is going to be going on in the basement?
Well, just, we're planning on having.
Oh, okay.
Any sort of religious gatherings or any sort of parties that we would throw, gatherings with family, and we would just use that space to hang out, essentially.
By religious gatherings, you're going to have like a house of worship within your house?
Not necessarily, but it would be, we would have a separate room in the house, which we would use for religious purposes. That would be on the top floor.
And that would just be for your immediate family or brothers?
No, just for our own immediate family.
The basement would be a kind of friends and.
For social gatherings.
Well, wouldn't be for religious purposes.
Well, it could be.
Could be.
Yeah.
Have you spoken to the town engineer at all on this?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, he gave us a, this huge report on the other house, but nothing on this one.
You know the rules better than I do. Soon as you start going above a certain percentage of coverage, DEP's rules start really cranking up in terms of water quality and.
Do you think that could be the case in this situation, John?
It's reaching a point with the coverage.
So how do we go forward if we don't even know if that's an issue yet?
I think the question answers itself.
We can't.
You're talking about impervious coverage? You're talking about impervious coverage?
No, it's not impervious coverage, building coverage, building shut, yeah. Impervious coverage is not a dramatic issue.
Not knowing the neighborhood, how does this house fit in aesthetically with the neighboring houses? I mean, I kind of do know the neighborhood. I don't know the exact street, but I believe it's Hills of Troy, and I don't think I've recognized a house of that size in the neighborhood.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a, I don't want to say a large spread, but there is a spread of homes. I did use the SR1 code, the SR1 cards, make an estimate of other building coverages. No disputing, my, here it is. I, I looked at all the homes in the streets around us, which was Spartan, Ulysses, Grecian, and Homer. And there's 54 homes there. Out of those 54 homes, there are 13 of them that exceed the 15%. And you also have some homes that are smaller. There's one home that's only 7.99%, up to a high of, I think, almost 21%.
How many stories are those homes?
I don't know. I'll be honest with you. I didn't look at the stories.
So I personally am less concerned about that and more concerned about an engineer's report, the fact that we somehow maintain that it is a one-family. The basement having the second, that staircase is a little bit, could be used for something else, I guess, if you want to have people come into the basement and not trek through the house. So for me, those are my concerns, you know? The fact that someone buys a house, or buys a piece of property, wants to build a house that's a little bigger, or bigger than the next-door neighbor, that just doesn't concern me as much, as long as he's not making it into a two-family or three-family.
My concern too, frankly, the building coverage, 15%, you said there are houses in the neighborhood that exceed that. Well, but this one is exceeding it by quite a large percentage.
Yes.
And 15 to 21, 6%, that's 40% larger, okay, in coverage. That's pretty dramatic. Why do, so you're going to defend why that's necessary?
Yeah, well, I made a study of the homes.
I understand, but that doesn't.
Out of the 13 that are over the 15%, six of them are 17% higher, one of them is 20.9%.
So there's not one house in this area, though, that has 21.25% coverage?
No, there's none of them that have 21.25%.
So.
Slightly over the highest one.
So this is significant. It's a significant variance request, right?
Yes.
You're here to get that variance. That's very significant. Are you going to give us testimony as to why that's needed?
I, I had discussions with the client about this, and it's mainly because of the families, and especially because of the elder parents need a bedroom on the first floor. They don't need stairs, so that enlarges the footprint on the ground floor. We talked about the possibility of taking that stairway that's on the right side of the building and maybe incorporating it in off the garage inside the building, to then you'd pick, you'd reduce the coverage by, well, five, reduce the coverage by about 60 square feet, which would help. But, you know, there.
Could be another exit, entrance right there on the side.
Their orders to me were that this is the size house they need. They met with the architect. This is what they need to accommodate what they're going to be using for, which is themselves, their parents, and their two sons. You know, it's, you're right, it's a lot, and you want protection on the zone that's a single family, and all I can tell you is that in other towns that I work in, they put right in the resolution that it must be a one-family home. You know, you cannot convert it to anything.
We do the same here. We can do that here, and we do do that.
Yeah.
But that's not the issue for tonight, so.
I, I think I got, you know, my, my question as it pertains to the engineer's report is looking, and we've had this a few times recently, that, that top, is there going to be an attic there? And if I look at the attic, it looks like there's a place, like a balcony out there, coming out from the roof, basically? So that's a concern of mine. Does that turn into?
Where do you see that, Chris?
On the front page?
Upper right corner.
You don't think? That looks to me, again, without having the report or knowing the height there. I, I don't know. That's just, no, it looks like the dormer is down below it.
I think it's a dormer. I believe those are the bump-out dormers on either side of the house.
That's on the third floor?
Yeah.
On the.
On the attic, yes.
Because there's no attic plan in the package.
Yeah. The dormer's right here. And then the attic here. And same thing back here, right here. There's a dormer, and then there's the other.
That just, to me, that just looks like a pitch.
If you look.
But we have to define what that third story is.
And then the other piece of it, Mr. Jaskiewicz asked before about the, the second egress, and there's a stairwell to the right, like you pointed out, that could probably easily be, have a door right outside and entrance and an exit right there, with a couple walls put in after the fact, turns into two-family.
Are there any windows on the third floor?
There's aesthetic windows on the third floor. So you look at this front view, the architect has tried to dress up to look at the house, especially in the upper roof area.
Are these just false dormers, or are they space?
My understanding is they're false dormers. I can.
We don't have an attic planned, so we don't know.
Yeah.
The attic is going to be, remain unfinished, time remaining. We're just planning on using it for storage. The attic is going to be, remain unfinished for the time remaining, we're just planning on using it for storage.
I think instead of going around and, around, cause we're not gonna be able to deal with drainage on this site cause we don't have an engineer's report. And that's the critical issue with your main, main variance is your coverage. And we'll, I think we'll just be going in circles and wasting everybody's time. Uh, we can obviously make a call, the engineering department, and ask them if they could, yes, a report. And we should get an attic plan so we have a complete set of the buil-, the building.
Do you think you should have his architect be here too?
Probably a good idea, right?
I, I already anticipated telling me the architect next to me. I could tell him the question.
Cause John's concern is this, is the coverage is, you know, could be water or whatnot. The board's concern might be more of the interior.
Well, both. I just, but we can't solve the drainage, it doesn't make any difference with the interiors. We could be comfortable with the drainage that we can focus on.
Absolutely.
The building itself.
There's a house there now, right? Yes. Well, I, I, I should say, they, they jumped the gun, not telling me, and had the existing house taken down. So as of right now, it's a vacant lot.
Oh, okay.
How big was the house that was taken down?
The house that was there was 1,791 square feet and 100 square foot shed.
Guys, please.
I'm, I'm just giving you the footprints, cause that's what I have on my drawing. And the driveway was 986 square feet. And then there was a paver and steps, which was 513 square feet. So what was there originally on total impervious coverage was 3,455.
Okay, uh, our job here is to approve or not approve variance requests here. Based on the information here and lack of evidence of other sides from the engineering report, we can, I will not be able to do that tonight, in my opinion. So I don't know if the rest of the board is in agreement with that, but clearly, we would need to have other information to proceed. The other thing...
Pardon?
I might want to pass over it. Okay, so, yeah, the other thing I, I, I would be remiss in not saying that here, I think, cause it's how I feel. Looks like a beautiful home. And there are a lot of homes in this town that are well over 3,000 square feet, okay? So that's not the issue. The issue is the location of this home, where you chose to put it at this time. And I really think that this is a welcoming, loving community, likes families together. Would love to have you be here and do that. But that site might not fit all you're gonna have to do. And all the work you're gonna have to do for construct, I mean, for drainage and everything else and impervious coverage. But the coverage of the property is very extensive increase of, uh, requirements here. And I would be very hard pressed to approve that, in my opinion, uh, on this site, so... If you can address some of those concerns of mine, then we'll welcome you back when you have the other additional information.
I think we'd like to actually get an actual report from the engineer.
Yeah. That's, that's the first step. But you can read the board and see what some of our concerns are.
I agree with you.
Um, and it seems like you have to have some conversation with your client. Uh, I assume you wanna carry this?
Yes, we're gonna have to carry it, we'll grant you an extension.
Hey Fred, uh, you should reach out to the township engineer. They already have the original application, they already have the zoning officer's report. Uh, you guys should do it and discuss it and, okay, and get me a copy of the report. We can carry this to...
Question, you say township engineer, am I dealing with Tom, or am I dealing with...
Township engineer, Justin.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to make sure I was getting the right person, that's all.
Okay. Okay, uh, we can carry it to September 25th.
September 25th, okay.
And you said you'll grant all extensions?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, for those of you who are here, there will be no additional notice. September 25th, same place, right here, 7:30 most likely. Um, that's it, okay? All right, well, that will do it for our regular agenda.
Motion to move.
Yeah, hold on, let me find the, uh...
It's tough here not seeing Robert there. To be here and...
We have to make some motions on that.
You were afraid of that. I bet you're gonna retire right there.
You wanna get everybody to swim, almost?
Yeah, that...
Folks, we are going into a closed session, so if we could ask you to exit as soon as possible?
All right, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PLO 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Adjustment is one of the, is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. And whereas the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Adjustment wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege regarding Pacific Outdoor versus Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Board of Adjustment that the public be excluded from this meeting. And I have a motion. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nora, are we good?
Yeah.
Back on the record, motion to close.
Second.
All right.
I see you two each.
See ya.
My biggest worry is that I don't understand, have the sign facing west. And they, some reasonably red, but the people doing that is just so many lines.
I have not heard. What address was it?
They are on a sign.
You know, if you wrote a zoning board, this would not be a spot.
Yeah, it's very possible that, you know, what happens...
If they had sort of scratched and said, hey, where are the spots that you think will work? You could think of the spot along 80 where you think they would be okay. This would be a spot.
Yeah. We were down the road, there are miles, there are miles, there's a hundred...
But over, like, further west, like, the other day, where all those office people are. So, there. That is a stop. You still see it there.